I will call the regular town council meeting to order on February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three at six o'clock. Mayor Mark Sukup.
Here.
Mayor Pro Ten Brett Hanson.
Here.
Councilmember Lisa Lake.
Here.
Councilmember Robert Oxmacher.
Present.
Councilmember Luke Wagner.
Here.
Amendments to the agenda. Do we have any? None? Public comments. Melissa.
Okay, general public comment starts with William Jenkins.
And before we go into public comment, I just wanted to make a comment about comments. So, public comment is an opportunity for members of the public to make any comments on anything that is not on the agenda for a public hearing. If it's on the agenda for a public hearing, you will have an opportunity to speak on that item. If it's just on the agenda without being listed as a public hearing, now's your time to talk. Or if it's something that is not on the agenda, you may talk for those three minutes. Counsel generally will not reply and cannot reply to your comments. And sometimes they are restricted because something is going to come before them as a quasi judicial matter at a future hearing. So if they can reply to something, they may reply during the counsel reports section of the agenda later in the agenda. Thank you.
Great. Can you hear me? Awesome. Good evening. My name is Dr. Bill Jenkins. I reside at fifty-five oh seven Sugarloaf Court. It was interesting attending your work session earlier this evening, providing an outside legal presentation on legislative and quasi judicial actions and ex parte communications. I really appreciate that it was scheduled. I think it was a great thing. Under the Colorado Fair Campaign Practices Act, also covered in the work session presentation earlier today, and for the benefit of town citizens, I'm gonna have a couple of quotes. "The town shall not make campaign contributions or spend any money from any source or make any contributions to urge electors to vote in favor or against statewide or local ballots. Furthermore, the use of town resources such as paper, ink, and staff time may be considered an in-kind contribution, which is also prohibited." "It's noteworthy that the town council can pass a resolution either in support of or opposition to a ballot question and circulate it, and this is key, I think, in the same manner as other resolutions are typically circulated." "I received emails from the town of Timmouth after council passed the resolution opposing the petition to limit building heights, which, by the way, has subsequently been replaced by a new narrower narrower petition in part based on thoughts from the town council." So, the first email, well, actually, it was the second email on January thirty-first, simply lists all of the actions taken, all the resolutions passed, totally appropriate. The second one I received on the day after the council meeting actually is a news article, fairly extensive. It's the only resolution that I've ever seen a news article emailed out. Right, so.
Bill, could I see that?
Yeah, I'll give you copies.
Thank you.
So. Yeah, so no other resolution received this special news treatment. Now, it it certainly conforms to the law, as I learned, because the title of the petition.
Hey, Bill, you got a couple more minutes.
Yeah, I'm almost done.
Thank you.
I'm almost on, almost done. But it certainly doesn't conform to the spirit of the law. Similarly, website pages of the news article about the resolution to that old petition are still on the town website as a news article. And again, it's the only resolution that's in the news section on the website. Again, I don't think it conforms to the spirit of the law, even though it may be technically legal. So I just wanted to point that out. I would hope, moving forward, that you know, public interaction with the council could be done, you know, openly, transparently, and in the spirit of the laws that are in place. And that's my comment.
Melissa.
I'll be happy to give these to you.
Next, I have Clifford Nancaro.
Thank you, members of the council. My name is Clifford Nancaro. My wife and I reside at six-seven-five-six Covenant Court in the Tall Grass neighborhood. I am a licensed but non-practicing CPA and a retired Navy captain. I am actively involved in the Guide Our Growth Citizens Petition Initiative. I have attended both the obligatory neighborhood meeting and the meeting hosted last night by Connell LLC. Neither meeting recorded in detail the concerns of the town's residents regarding plans for the Topgolf Day and Night Driving Range complex, which have only recently been acknowledged and disclosed as a critical element of the proposed Ladera development. Given that those concerns were not captured for inclusion in the Timmouth Planning Staff deliberations, I'm speaking tonight to make some of those concerns a matter of public record. At these two meetings, citizens numbering greater than one hundred have attempted to communicate their opposition to Topgolf as it is a multi-story lighted driving range facility with nets exceeding one hundred and seventy feet, intended to be built in one of Colorado's three designated national heritage areas. It's a structure that threatens the unhindered flight of protected American bald eagles, herons, and migrating birds of many species. It's an entertainment facility licensed to serve alcoholic beverages and operating into the early morning hours on Friday and Saturday nights that will only add to the automobile traffic volume at intersections that are overly congested along Harmony Road between Interstate twenty-five and Club Drive. It's being run by a national commercial enterprise with little demonstrated interest in local community issues and a substandard reputation with respect to preserving employee dignity and safeguarding their well-being, particularly as pertaining to documented incidents of unaddressed sexual harassment. A project that, it's a project that doesn't come within a long fairway wood of fitting into the vision for Timmouth's growth embodied in the Timmouth Comprehensive Plan approved in February two thousand and twenty. The town council and the planning staff that answers to the council have been more than circumspect with respect to Topgolf. Many would say deceptive, particularly in conjunction with incentives and tax breaks apparently offered to this component of the Fortune four hundred company that surely doesn't need them. And it was seen from the confidence exhibited by the developer, including Topgolf Building and Nets in all of the images portraying this development, that they seem to have assurances that this project will be granted, the waivers necessary to begin construction, regardless of the citizens' concerns, which have now been twice brushed off and dismissed when they were supposed to have been heard and considered.
Clifford, you have ten more seconds.
Thank you. If it is not too late for those financial accommodations negotiated behind closed doors to be withdrawn, I would respectfully request the town council issue a resolution to the effect that Topgolf is simply not a good fit for our town and advise the corporate executives in California and the local developers that any submittal for permission to build a Topgolf facility in Timmouth will not be approved. Thank you.
Melissa.
Lynn Christie.
Good evening. My name's Lynn Christie, and I live at fifty-eight twenty-one River Bluff Drive. When an employer looks for new employees, the employer vets the prospective employees for a good fit. As a resident of Timmouth, I would expect the town council to do the same for businesses that they would like to encourage to make a home in Timmouth. To that end, I encourage all of you on town council to read the following December two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-three-page report entitled hashtag Stop Golf. It looks like this. It is very easy to find on the internet just by simply Googling Stop Golf. I'm now quoting from the report. Quote, "This report is based on pleadings from twelve legal cases against Topgolf, including two this year alone," and they are referring to two thousand and twenty-one, "as well as surveys, polls, and interviews with seventy-two workers from twenty-eight locations of Topgolf in fifteen states, conducted from March twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one, through December first, two thousand and twenty-one. These workers' stories reflect a pattern and practice of sexual harassment, wage theft, and enforced white supremacy pervading the entire corporation, disproportionately affecting women of color and those who are undocumented," end quote. After reading the report, I would ask this question of yourself. Am I comfortable having my daughter, my son, my wife, my husband, my friend, or my neighbor work at this establishment? And then I would ask you to please act accordingly. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Melissa.
Matt Clark.
Thank you, council members. My name is Matt Clark. I'm a Northern Colorado native and was fortunate to grow up in this area. Live at seven zero five eight Thunderview Drive in Wildwing. And for nearly forty years, I've watched this area grow and change, sometimes for the better and sometimes for the worse. And I think, as the speakers before outlined beautifully, I think a development that includes Topgolf would be a mistake and would not align with the history of this area or the character of this town. And I think we should strive to pass along something to the community and to our children that's more significant than that. I would encourage us all to reconsider, if it's not too late, the plans to that project and our approach to growth in Timmouth overall. Thank you.
Thank you, your maj. Melissa.
Didn't circle anything. Irv Christie, did you want to speak on general public comment?
Hello, good evening. My name is Irvin Christie. I live at fifty-eight twenty-one River Bluff Drive in Surfield Estate, portion of Timmouth. I'm here tonight to call your attention to the statements concerning within the town council proposed, or actually not proposed, but approved Resolution ten. Specifically, there are statements which reference the purpose of the comprehensive plan, which is to create a vital cohesive, well-designed community in order to enhance the town's character and further the citizens' goals as identified in the Town Timmouth Comprehensive Plan. I love the comprehensive plan. I love the land use code. I love the work that's been done with the citizens of Timmouth, along with representatives of the Timmouth. What I don't care for is a repeated and blatant disregard for the contents of the plan by the town council and other city members. So, the plan's one hundred and ten pages. Let me call your attention to a couple of items that are in the plan. Object to six point two point three. "We target businesses and industries that enrich the tax base, provide high-quality jobs, provide needed and unique services to residents, and create few off-site impacts." Goal six point three. Commercial unemployment development is clean, energy efficient, aesthetically pleasing, sustainably built, and economically resilient. Goal one point three. New developments, redevelopments, and infrastructure investments encourage efficient and intentional use of the land to create a local community. We ensure that zoning changes and proposed developments conform to the comprehensive plan. The land use code currently has a height limit of sixty feet, fifty feet, with a variance limit of fifteen percent, making structures of greater than sixty feet in violation of the code, unless a variance is granted. The submitted plan to, for the Topgolf facility that's gone to the planning commission would require one hundred and twenty-one variances to the land use code. Let me repeat that number, one hundred and twenty-one variances. Given the council's track record of routinely granting development proposal variances which are inconsistent with the core principles of the comprehensive plan, a small group of residents, including myself, believe it's necessary to circulate a petition which, if approved in a special election, would stipulate a maximum height limit for fences and netting of sixty-five feet. My question is this. Wouldn't it just be simpler for town council to act in a manner consistent with the spirit and the principles in the comprehensive plan and strictly limit the number of variances, particularly those that exceed height, noise, and lighting limitations? Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa.
Again, no notion as to which one. Dan Etheridge? Do you want general public comment?
Yeah, my name is Dan Etheridge. I reside at fifty-seven sixty-five Isabella Avenue in Trailside. First, I'd like to speak to the wildlife issues that are threatened by the Topgolf construction. The Ladera Development is requesting a variance to Timmouth Building Code to allow structure heights up to one hundred and seventy-five feet to accommodate the poles and netting of a Topgolf facility. Topgolf is also known to use high wattage lighting in its outdoor facility, and this lighting would be utilized from dusk until closing times as late as one or two AM. Many of these lights are left on twenty-four seven for cleaning and maintenance purposes as well. Topgolf is also known to provide live or recorded music during all hours of operation. We know from bird studies that many avian species in the region, many federally protected, are adversely affected by the type of lights and sound that Topgolf produces. High netting in the pass, flight paths of birds may endanger many birds, and the fact has been documented. Among the birds potentially affected by the project include the American bald eagle and the blue heron. Both of these species are known to nest in the near vicinity of the proposed project site located directly in the Koshla Puder National Heritage Area and include foraging areas that overlap the project location. So, my first question is what is being done to protect the wetland matrix that may be impacted by this new development? And my second question regards the fact that the town was sent a letter from the Audubon Society Dark Skies Association and the Colorado State University Field Ornithologist Group in June of last year, raising concerns over the impact of a Topgolf in this location. But to date, there has been no response. So, my question there is why has there been no response to these serious concerns about impact to wildlife? And when can we, or when can they expect a response? Thank you.
Thank you.
Vanessa Hughes.
Hi, I'm Vanessa Hughes. I live at four five two eight Beryl Lane with my husband. We are both former U.S. Air Force and U.S. Navy. And yeah, I received a flyer in my mailbox urging me not to sign in my petition. And in my nature, I looked into the issue, and that's how I stumbled onto Guide Our Growth Timmouth. I find it appalling that a project that has significant environmental and quality of life implications has not been brought up as a vote to the Timmouth residents, and there seems to be a push supported by the council members to silence us, as evident by the distributed flyers to all our mailboxes. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa.
That's all for general public comment unless somebody has.
Okay, thanks. I will commend everybody. You did not duplicate your comments. They were all different, and we appreciate that. Consent agenda. Anybody have any questions? The only one that I thought maybe somebody might is four D, but if every, anybody, nobody has a question, could I have a a motion to approve?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Mayor Reports. I want to sort of close up the loop on the initiative petition. As everyone knows, there's a second petition out there. The first one has been revoked. The town set up a resolution previously that to not prevent at all the distribution of that initiative. In fact, it definitely was a furthest from what we'd want. What we did do is suggest to the town citizens not to sign the petition because there were a lot of faults in it. There, I mean, there were just a lot of faults. It was, it was going into the charter, and it had a number of faults. So, the second petition initiative has been sent out. We will not be issuing a resolution. We will not be issuing a resolution saying to sign or not to sign this initiative because it meets all the legal requirements of a petition, and therefore, we have no reason to not accept that. So I thought I'd sort of close the loop there and let everybody know that that's where this council is. The second thing that I'd like to discuss, and it's, you know, it's hard for me to listen to some of the comments. You know, I'm a CPA. I've been a CPA for forty-three years. I taught ethics for ten years all across the country. It was one of my jobs, actually, was to teach ethics across the country. I've never been brought up with any kind of suggestion of ethic comments. And so to have people question my ethical standing is real disappointing. I can say every one of the council people here ran and were elected because they loved Timneth. You may not agree with a position we take, but do not discredit our integrity. So there's been a couple things that were brought up. First off, that we make discussions behind closed doors. We absolutely do not. Everything that we do is open. We're required to be open. We take great efforts to make it open, and we go on with that. Nobody on this council has talked to Topgolf. Nobody on this council has talked to Ladera. Now, we have sent, fifteen months ago, I sent a understanding letter to Callaway to say, this is something we might do. That was fifteen months ago. It really, quite frankly, has no merit, and that letter said that it was totally subject to a vote of the council. One of the things that every one of us up here feel, and we're as frustrated as you are, I can tell you we're as frustrated as you are, we wanted the developer, the developer is required to have a neighborhood meeting. That they held last Thursday. Monday, they elected to have a meeting, and we were told that they were going to disseminate information on Topgolf. They didn't. I can tell you, I can assure you, we were as frustrated, if not more frustrated, about that situation than you were. We had nothing to do with it. We don't have any control over it, and you need to know that some of these things are out of our control. We just had, if you had the opportunity and you didn't listen before, hadn't gotten a chance to listen, we had a discussion on ex parte communication. And we're precluded from talking about Topgolf as an event. I can talk about it as a concept, but I can't talk about it as a project or, you know, what the pros and cons of having Topgolf here. We're precluded from doing that. We are trying our best to do the right thing. You may not agree with what we do, but everything that we do is open and forthright. There is nothing hitting. There is nothing that we have behind closed doors. And it's disappointing that there have been people that suggest that because it just doesn't happen. And there's a lot of misunderstandings. It was mentioned earlier that Topgolf had one hundred and twenty-one variances. They don't have one hundred and twenty-one variances. That's what they asked for. We haven't even moved it, you know? They may get zero. They may get ten. Who knows what it is? But it has not come to this council, so they have not received any variances at all. And it's very clear that we all need to make sure we're dealing with facts. We're not dealing with misunderstandings and misrepresentations. Let's deal with facts. The key is, we want you involved. We want our town involved. We want you to be involved in the discussions and stuff. We want you to send your emails to us so that we can see what you're saying. And those emails are important to us, and your comments today are important to us. We listen. But we're all, everyone up here is giving up their family time, their own time, to be a good citizen of Timneth, and my request is that you respect that. Okay? Anybody else have comments?
I'll just make a brief comment, adding on a little bit to what the mayor said. You know, we get a lot of emails. We've heard a lot of comments about why isn't the council responding to letters, to emails, to concerns that people have brought up. And again, I just want to emphasize that aspect of state law, ex parte communication. There's a specific question about the Audman Society's letter. When there's pending matters coming before us, we can't talk about it. It all goes in the public record. We read it. When it is time, we can review those things. There'll be environmental impact studies, traffic impact studies. All that will happen when it is time, but we can't do hypothetical studies on an application. There just has to be a certain order to how this review is done, and we can't put the cart before the horse. And then as far as, you know, just my general approach to this type of issue, you know, the Guida Growth Group, I'm glad you're involved. And then you've chosen to take a course that, in the end, will take us out of it. You know, there are a lot of people in this community that feel one way or the other, and the community's going to get the chance to speak because of your efforts. So in the end, that's who you're going to have to make your case to, and we'll act according to that direction. Because we are trying to listen. We're trying to move in a direction that generally the community wants to go. So I hope you keep that in mind as you go through your efforts to be part of this process, that we're watching it, and we'll try and take that input, that feedback into account. That's all.
Okay, anybody else? Robert, do you want to introduce the Limer County District Attorney?
I do, but actually, I do have one update before we get there. Yeah, on a, I'm sure, quite less controversial topic. There was an article in the Coloradoan end of last week entitled "Whitesville Street Woes: Why One of Northern Colorado's Most Congested Intersections Is So Bad." I first wanted to thank and acknowledge Miles Blumhardt from the Coloradoan for meeting with our staff and for covering this important topic. I want to thank our staff, Matt, Don, and Eric, for taking the time to meet with the Coloradoan and walk them through the history and challenges with this particular area. The comments I'm about to make are my own. They do not necessarily represent the town or my fellow council members. As one turns off the public road, Harmony, and enters the private Walmart parking lot, there exists an absolutely ridiculous intersection comprised of a three-way stop in a four-way intersection. At its best, this intersection is clunky and confusing. At times of peak use or inclement weather, traffic devolves into complete gridlock, on some occasions trapping families in the Walmart parking lot for hours on end. This bonkers traffic design is on private property that's owned and operated by Walmart. There are also other businesses located on this private property, most of which lease their land from Walmart. Although the town of Timneth does not control this property, Timneth does bear some responsibility as we oversaw repeated development, review, and approval processes dating back to Walmart's grand opening in two thousand and nine. Recognizing that this intersection is frustrating, that it creates safety concerns, and that it reflects poorly on our town, our staff have worked very hard over the past five years to identify actionable solutions. Staff has suggested multiple options for improvement, and town council has pledged town funds to assist in solutions. Prior to the pandemic, discussions with Walmart and other stakeholders had, in fact, produced plans to improve the intersection. However, when traffic in the area temporarily decreased during the pandemic, Walmart backed off all commitments to make improvements. In a statement to the Coloradoan associated with that article, Walmart stated that they are, quote, "actively developing alternatives to improve traffic flow and look forward to working on a solution with city leaders. As a town leader, I now call on Walmart to make good on their current and prior promises to implement a solution to this well-known and longstanding traffic nightmare." Thank you.
All right. Yes, sir. Somebody said Mark.
Yeah. Do you want to mention the state of the town?
Yeah, would you please?
No.
So February twenty-third, we have the state of the town. There's a lot of stuff going on with state of the town, so we hope that you can come. We'll give you hopefully information on what's going on, what we did last year, and what we anticipate doing this year. So we encourage you to come and be involved and take an active part and role in how the town progresses. Thanks, Luke. All right. Now, would you like to introduce the district attorney?
Thanks, Mayor, and it's a great night to have our elected district attorney, Gordon McLaughlin, join us. He's here tonight to talk about some transparency initiatives going on at the DA's office, which I think fits well into some of your comments, Mayor. District Attorney, if you have a presentation or need a chat here, can assist.
And District Attorney, would you introduce yourself?
I will. Thank you. Thank you, Board Member Exmacher, and thank you to the rest of the board and town staff for having me here tonight. I'm Gordon McLaughlin, District Attorney for the Eighth Judicial District, which is Laramie and Jackson Counties, and of course, includes the town of Timneth. I'm here today to introduce myself to everybody, the board, the staff, and the community. I know everyone did not turn out necessarily to see me. They probably turned out to talk about Topgolf, but I'm happy to capitalize on that tonight. From whatever side of Topgolf people are on, I'm neutral, but I'm happy to see folks here because really, we do want to introduce ourselves to the community, be accountable to y'all, and be transparent. And so we're trying to get around to the different boards and councils that we have throughout Laramie County in an effort to do that. Additionally, Board Member Exmacher offered me a red rose if I came on Valentine's Day, and so here I am to celebrate with y'all. I'm going to fly through some stuff tonight because I know I don't have a ton of time, and obviously, people have probably romantic plans this evening. But I just wanted to sort of start this connection, let folks know who I am, who our office is, so they have a face and office to contact. We, of course, already have a great relationship with the Timneth Police Department and Chief Jones, and very much cherish that relationship, but we serve a different function. People need to go to the police for one thing. They come to the district attorney's office for that whole next series of events in the criminal justice system. This is just a map of what the Eighth Judicial District looks like. It's that green block at the top, so we're a pretty vast swath. I just put some statistics up. We're about three hundred and seventy thousand people. Timneth is two percent. That is indeed really small population-wise, but again, we really try to get out to all of our communities. Y'all are lucky, in my opinion, because you have a great board member in Mr. Exmacher, who is very familiar with our office and a great colleague of ours. We are available in many different ways. That's our website. We're adding more stuff to it all the time. It's laramieda.gov, excuse me, laramie.gov/DA. If you just Google Laramie DA, it pops up. We're adding a lot more stuff to that, things like our full letters on critical incident responses, officer uses of force, our data dashboard that I'll get into quickly, and all sorts of things are up on there. We're also in social media. We're on Twitter and Facebook, so you can find us there and really sort of see what we're doing on a day-to-day basis. Our handle is DA8Colorado. We also host the Citizens Academy. We started that last year. It was incredibly popular. Folks really enjoyed getting to know more about what we do on a daily basis, what our goals are. We're going to be hosting another one. We're about to announce the application process. It's probably going to be late March into early April, and we should be announcing that pretty soon here. This is our mission and vision. I'll just read the vision quickly. That is to protect and serve Laramie and Jackson Counties while creating a stronger community where the application of criminal justice is more equitable and no longer at odds with social justice. So what that means essentially is my mandate is community safety. I take that mandate incredibly seriously, but the way in which we enforce criminal, excuse me, community safety, we're looking to do so in a fair and compassionate manner. This is a little bit of a roadmap of what the DA's office does. Not going to go through all these steps, but this is only to show what we do really is vast. We make all of the decisions on charging. That means what to charge, what level to charge, and if to charge anyone with a crime. Then we make the decisions through the rest of the criminal justice process. So that's on things like, should we offer a plea? What should that consist of? Are we making bond recommendations to judges, sentencing recommendations to judges? We're handling all the victim contact throughout this whole process, appeals processes, trial, et cetera. So sometimes a case can be with us for six, twelve, eighteen, twenty-four months even. If that's a more serious case, like a homicide, they take a long way to wind their way through the criminal justice system. We're there to work diligently on those cases to ensure accountability. We're also there to support victims throughout that process. We have a robust victim services department, which a lot of folks don't know about. We have about thirteen people in that department looking to make sure that we are supporting victims throughout the criminal justice process. This is just a little bit of a thirty-thousand-foot view on the scope of our work. This is Laramie, excuse me, Eighth Judicial District-wide, and this is cases filed by quarter. So you can see, we're filing just under two thousand misdemeanors a quarter and about five hundred and fifty felonies a quarter. That averages out to something like twelve thousand cases a year that we file in Laramie and Jackson County. People hear that number and sort of sometimes think, oh, my gosh, is this an unsafe community? Absolutely not. This is a great community, but in every county, there is a lot that goes on behind the scenes. I know Chief Jones could verify that. There are DUIs. There is domestic violence. There is stuff that certainly our papers don't report and people don't hear about that we're working hard on every day. These are just a few highlights of some of our programs and projects. We started an adult diversion program in the fall of two thousand and twenty-one. Diversion means literally what it says. We are diverting people from the criminal justice system to alternative means, and the goal is to create accountability, rehabilitation, and addressing root causes of crime so that folks don't come back into the system. Because the reality is, with almost every crime, folks are going to be back in our communities, so we want to make sure that they are going to be law-abiding members of our community. Part of that is a restorative justice program. So we've launched restorative justice countywide, and that's the first time that's been offered countywide. In two thousand and twenty-two, we put about three hundred and fifty people through our diversion program, and we had a ninety-one percent success rate, so we're very proud of those early results. We've also started a complex case prosecutor position. The nuts and bolts of that is this is a position that's concentrating on gun crime and fentanyl distribution. I know a lot of folks at this point have heard of fentanyl. Fentanyl is affecting Laramie County, just as it is Colorado and the country. It is an incredibly deadly drug. It is lethal in a much different level than other narcotics that we have dealt with in the past are, and so we're putting a lot of focus on that. I was part of the effort to get a bill passed in the legislature last year that made a new crime called distribution-causing death, which means that if someone gives fentanyl to someone, which is essentially near poisoning someone, we are going to prosecute that person for a homicide-level crime. That is not just the normal drug distribution. Only four of those cases have been filed in the state so far, and we've filed two of them here in Laramie County because we are putting the resources into them in partnership with all of our law enforcement agencies. We started a competency court docket in two thousand and twenty-one. This has become a nationwide model for other counties to, excuse me, replicate. The competency court takes hosts with serious mental health conditions that are undergoing what we call competency proceedings, meaning essentially, are they fit to stand trial? And the state process is unfortunately totally broken. Our state... And the state process is unfortunately totally broken. Our state hospital is totally backlog, totally overloaded, which led to folks sitting in our county jail at our county expense for months and years waiting for those services. So this competency court is trying to focus resources to get those people help and get them out of custody if they can safely be out of custody. We started an economic crime task force that has gotten some pretty big restitution numbers for folks. Just a couple of weeks ago, we settled a case where we got $100,000 in restitution that was stolen from the Pooter Library System, which is, of course, all of our taxpayer money, or at least within the Pooter Systems taxpayer money. We also updated our critical incident response protocol. Our DA's office is responsible for investigating all officer-involved shootings, and we have broadened that protocol to make sure that all uses of force that result in serious bodily injury are reported to us. We are trying to avoid situations, for instance, like happened in the Karen Garner case in Loveland, where serious bodily injury happened to one of our citizens and the DA's office was not reported to them. That's not acceptable. Our law enforcement agencies, including Timneth, have all signed on to this protocol. We have great collaboration in that, and we're making sure that everyone is being held accountable, that those investigations are thorough, and that we're publishing all the results to you all, and that's been very successful so far. I mentioned our victim services. That's something that folks don't realize we do. That's important to highlight. We also got a courtroom facility dog this year, which is sort of a piece of that puzzle in supporting victims. We unfortunately at the DA's office deal with some very, very horrible situations. Sex assaults, crimes against children, where we're bringing those folks into the criminal justice system, to the courthouse. And by definition, they are re-traumatized by having to come into that courthouse. Despite our best efforts, it is difficult, and so making sure we support them in every way possible. So now we have this facility dog that's been trained for two years in California at an agency to make sure that we are providing all that support. So it's especially valuable with child victims and with other folks that are especially nervous about the criminal justice system to provide some extra grounding in what we do. We also developed a nation-leading public data dashboard. So if you go to our website, under the Statistics tab, you can see a lot about what we do. I'm not even going to pretend to scratch the surface on that here tonight, but I'd encourage folks to go there. We want you to know what we do. We want to know what we're doing well, what we're not doing well, where we can improve. So all these statistics are brand new. They had never been collected before. We joined with seven other judicial districts, and we're now collecting a whole litany of statistics and then publishing them to you all. I'm going to show just a couple of quick slides here tonight, and these slides are Timneth-specific. So on our internal dashboard, we can filter by agency and see what the statistics are. This shows cases filed with our office in, from the Timneth Police Department. There is one weird spike and actually just ran these numbers, so I've not looked into why that is. And so I can't answer that, so I'll preempt those questions of saying I don't know that specific answer. This is a small sample size, of course, because the Timneth Police Department is a small part of Laramo County. But one of the things I did notice, and I ran this separately for y'all, is that, you know, the growing crime was misdemeanors. The percentage of felony crime here is still very small, so that that's something that I think we can all be proud of, that again, the serious crime here is at a very, very low level and frankly, a dropping percentage of the overall crime in Timneth specifically. This is again a Timneth-specific chart showing how we at the DA's office have resolved those cases that come to us from the police department. The resolution on here, I apologize, is not great. Some of those colors sort of look the same. But that bottom block is the plead guilty block, and that's obviously the biggest block. So most of those cases are resulting in guilty pleas. That gray block sort of in the middle, that is what we call deferred sentences. That's growing because we think the benefit of deferred sentences is a great return on our criminal justice system investment. Deferred sentences essentially means someone pleads guilty to the crime. We assign them normal terms and conditions of probation. They have to complete all those. That might be drug and alcohol classes. It might be community service, paying restitution to victims and other things. If they successfully complete that without committing new crimes, we then dismiss the case because the purposes of the sentence have been served. And so that is a great way to resolve cases quickly, to be efficient, and to get that accountability. So countywide, though, folks can find this information on our website. And this is percentage of sentences imposed. This is a Timneth-specific chart that I ran. So this is what folks are actually getting sentenced to. So for instance, that bottom red block is probation. That block is stayed about the same. The yellow block is jail, so we have tried to reduce our reliance on jail because jail is not necessarily going to cure the root cause of a crime. For certain crimes, absolutely people need to go to jail, need to go to prison in order to keep the community safe, and we continue to do that. But when other things will work better for a long-term safety, that is what we're prioritizing. This is countywide. This is violent crimes by quarter. I show this because certainly violent crimes are a concern of ours. They're a concern of the community. Unlike some of the metro areas, we have not seen a big spike in violent crime. So this is aggregated quarterly, and you can see it's been essentially flat since 2017. I don't have to tell folks in a room in Timneth that our county is growing very rapidly. So the fact that we have kept violent crime essentially flat over a greater-than-five-year period, I think is very positive. I'm going to stop there to see if the board has any questions or anything they'd like us to follow up on or let the board know about. Again, our goal here is to be transparent, to be communicative, and to make sure that we build a strong relationship with the Timneth community.
This is a great, great presentation. I will congratulate you on the library restitution case. I used to be on the library board, so it was nice to see that you guys did such a great job on that. So I don't think, do we have anything? No, I think you just said it's such a great job. We don't have any questions. You actually did do a great job. Thank you so much for coming in and telling us.
Okay. Well, thank you. I appreciate everyone's time. Happy Valentine's.
Happy Valentine's to you. All right. Resolution number 11, Series 2023, a resolution approving vehicle purchases of three vehicles. Terry. Chief Jones.
Thanks, Mayor. Counsel. This resolution is a request for the purchase of new vehicles to our fleet. It's to accommodate new hires and as well as the service life of some of our vehicles will pass due. Additionally, the vehicles we are asking for is a low-profile vehicle, which is a vehicle that's just a plain brown wrapper. It has no light bar, but it has emergency equipment. Otherwise, a fully-marked car and then a pickup truck that's fully marked. And that purpose is specifically for overweight vehicles for traffic control and traffic, I suppose, traffic control endeavors, which overweight vehicles consist of semi-trucks and probably in the future will ask for the scales to accommodate that. I believe it's well within the budget, and we are seeking counsel approval.
What's the first car used for? Just curiosity.
The first car?
Yes.
Low profile.
Yeah.
It's a generally a Chevy Tahoe, but it's just-
But I mean, what do you use it for?
Undercover work or surveillance.
Great. Enough said.
Or detective work.
Enough said. I'm just curious. Anybody else? I was just learning stuff.
Could you specify when that car will be doing speed patrols? I'm just kidding.
Seven days a week.
Got it.
Especially around Timneth Ranch.
Yeah. Yes.
Luke.
Terry, I know there's some supply chain shortages. Sorry, Chief Jones, I know there's supply chain shortages. Do you have a timeframe on when, from the purchase date, these can be deployed for our officers?
Probably at least a year. State bid comes in a 24-hour period. That it's a lottery system. We're lucky if we get the cars, and then when we get the cars, they have to be outfitted at another vendor. So it'll be about a year.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any further? Do I have a motion to approve Resolution Number 11, Series 2023, a resolution approving vehicle purchases of three vehicles?
I move to approve the resolution approving the purchase of three patrol vehicles.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Resolution is approved. Good sales job, Chief. Resolution Number 12, Series 2023, a resolution approving a town council waiver to the Rain Tree Animal Hospital site plan. Kevin Kobel. Did I say the wrong one? All right. Okay, I got it.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Counsel. Let me just see if this will load real quick. All right, so this is a waiver request. My apologies. This is a waiver request for the Rain Tree Animal Hospital site plan of the Timneth Design Standards relating to fences, walls, and hedges. The owner and applicant is Dr. John Arnold. The site is located on Lot 4 of Timneth Landing, filing number 5, which is 5620 East Harmony Road, north of Harmony and east of Signal Tree Drive. Per Land Use Code Section 2915, the council may waive any dimensional standards contained in the town's development code. The section the applicant has requested to waive is 5351F, which is fences, walls, and hedges height. This states that the fence shall be no more than six feet high from the rear property line or the side yard to the front building face. The applicant is proposing to increase the height of the previously proved fence to eight feet to provide additional safety and security to the animals while allowing as much visual activation as possible. So what we have here on the screen as the previously approved site plan outlined in red is the fence that we are discussing. Also in your packet, I provided the approved detailed sections of that fence from the 2001, September 2001 approval. Upon further discussion with the owner, staff acknowledges the potential risk associated with an animal hospital, especially with the location abutting Harmony Road. Additionally, staff believes the requests would not create any adverse impacts on health, safety, or the environment and will not change the approved design and fence materials. So what is shown in this approved plan would be the same design, just elevated two feet to eight feet total. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of the waiver from the Land Use Code criteria. We are happy to answer any questions you may have. Also, Dr. Arnold is in attendance if he would like to speak or if you have any questions for him directly.
Do you have a question, Brett?
No.
You, Robert?
I would just like to hear a little bit more about the why. What's eight foot going to do that six foot won't?
Thank you, Counsel. John Arnold, veterinarian owner of Rain Tree Animal Hospital. This area is a play area, so outdoor, think outdoor doggy daycare. Think that lab that looks at a six-foot fence and is like, like my kid, like, it's tall, but man, I might give it a go. Like, all of our yard fences, for reference, are about a six-foot fence. And I've been doing this for a while, and I've seen a dog get out of the fence, get to another dog in a fence, and I see the repercussions of that. I'm here for safety. Safety first for, I'm a vet, so safety first for the animals and also for the humans because we've got Harmony right along there. And I just, I'm going to sleep a heck of a lot better with an eight-foot fence than a six-foot fence. And I can, I can really feel good telling somebody, yeah, your dog, just focus on having fun while you're at work. Have fun. We built this beautiful place for you to run and roughhouse and do all the fun things that you should be doing. And I need to sleep at night knowing I've done everything to keep them safe, and I believe that eight-foot fence.
Great. Good. Any follow-up? Anybody? Your building looks beautiful, and I like the stone pillars for the fence that you've got sitting out there. It looks very, very attractive.
Thank you.
Yeah, Chad, in my correct understanding, right across the street is an eight-foot fence as well. That is correct, yes. So the approved site plan for the police station did request a few waivers for their fence, both the location and the height. So they are at an eight-foot height for their fence. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve Resolution Number 12, Series 2023, a resolution approving the town council waiver to the Rain Tree Hospital site plan?
I move to approve the town council waivers to the Rain Tree Animal Hospital site plan.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution Number 12, Series 2023, a resolution approving a town council waiver to the Rain Tree Animal Hospital site plan, proven unanimously. Resolution Number 13, Series 2023, a resolution approving Canyon Express Car Wash Site Plan. Chad.
Thank you, Mayor. As you said, Item 6C is a site plan application for Cannon Express Car Wash. The proposal includes a 7,310-square-foot car wash and two commercial buildings equalling 3,200 square feet each. The owner is Edward Cannon, and the applicant is Bulldog Engineering, represented by Mark Harris. I apologize. It is not showing up. The subject properties are outlined in blue, located at 5580 and 5600 Harmony Road, which are lots two and three of the Timneth Landing fifth filing. All right. While Kevin tries to get that pulled up for your review. So the lots are totaling roughly 2.98 acres. Administrative plat application was requested to combine these lots concurrent with this proposal. The property is north of Harmony Road, just east of Signal Tree Drive, and directly across from the new Timneth Police Station. The site will have access from Signal Tree and from a private drive to the east of the property with a write-in-only access from Harmony Road. The property is owned community commercial with a PD overlay. The use of a car wash is permitted with conditions. One of those conditions is that it may not front Harmony Road. The tenants for the proposed buildings B and C, which are to the south of the lot, will need to comply with the allowable uses within the Harmony Corridor District. The parking requirement for a car wash is determined by the development plan. In this case, the maximum number of employees at one time is four. Therefore, the applicant has proposed five standard spaces and one ADA space with 17 vacuum spaces, including one electric vehicle charging station. The commercial users for the proposed two southern buildings totaling 6,400 square feet have not been determined at this time. This proposal is providing 29 spaces, including two ADA spaces and two electric vehicle charging stations. The applicant has based the required benchmark of 16 parking spaces based on the requirements for personal and business service shops and professional offices and financial services, requiring one space for every 400 square feet. Although those users have not been determined, the required parking for each potential user will need to meet that 29 spaces provided in this plan. However, buildings B and C are intended to be multi-tenant buildings, which may allow for overall parking count to be reduced up to 20% per Section 5, 8, 10 of the Land Use Code. Any requests would need to be evaluated by staff for consideration, and the developer would need to provide justification for any requests in the form of a parking memo or any other exhibit if they were to seek any sort of reduction there. The site is providing 25% open space, if you can imagine, with 5.6% being usable open space, meeting the Harmony Corridor requirements. The site includes public gathering spaces throughout the site, which will be furnished with planter beds and benches. The site was reviewed against Section 510 Harmony Corridor Design Standards of the Land Use Code. This site plan meets all the architectural landscaping and site requirements from those standards, except for the following, which are being requested to be waived for the site. This site plan meets all the architectural landscaping and site requirements from those standards, except for the following, which are being requested to be waived for the site. One of those being five, ten, five, three, F. There shall be a minimum separation of ten feet between all buildings and parking spaces or drive aisles. The site plan is proposing a minimum separation of six feet in select areas of the north side of the car wash. Due to the constraints of the site from other setbacks and requirements, the ten-foot requirement cannot be met. Staff believes that the request would not hinder this site as the use of a car wash does not result in the need for increased accessibility by pedestrians. Therefore, the spacing requirement is less of a concern from staff in comparison to other users. It's also worth noting that the applicant has proposed wheel stops at parking stalls adjacent to these sections to avoid vehicle overhang onto those sidewalks. The other section that they are asking for waiver is five, ten, six, eight, C, one. Shrub and ground cover planting beds shall be separated from turf grass with edging and shall open surface areas covered with mulch and be a minimum of five feet wide. The site plan is proposing a reduction of the planter bed widths along the south side of the car wash and north side of Building B, which is at the southwest of the site. Due to the constraints, again, from the site and other setbacks, the five-foot requirement cannot be met. Portions of this planting bed along the southern elevation of the car wash have been reduced to two feet to accommodate the required widths for a private drive and emergency access easement and pedestrian access around the building. Similarly, the planting bed along the north elevation of Building B was reduced to two feet in areas to provide the required ten-foot separation for parking stalls to the north. Staff and the DRC have reviewed the waiver request and found them acceptable, given the unique design requirements for a car wash and commercial users. For section two nine four four of the Land Use Code, a neighborhood meeting is required for site plans of two buildings or more. That meeting was held on September twelfth here at the town center to show the proposed plan and gather any feedback or concerns with the proposal. Roughly five residents attended that meeting in their summary, as in that report attached in the observation report of your package. Lastly, the site plan application has been reviewed against the Timneth Land Use Code Development Standards, Design Guidelines, and Review Criteria. Section two nine nine of the Land Use Code requires site plans of two buildings or more to receive approval from Town Council. Planning Commission recommended approval of the site plan and the requested waivers by a five oh vote on January seventeenth. And staff echoes those recommended, the recommendation of approval. I will now turn it over to Mark Harris for a brief presentation.
Thank you, Chad. Thank you everyone for being here tonight. So my presentation has some repeat slides that, on information that Chad's already covered, so I'll probably just go through those pretty quick. Maybe. So a lot of the slides are just repetitive information. There's a few renderings that we've completed that we'd like to share with you all, just so that we can bring the ultimate development to life before it's actually built out.
While he's doing that, does any, up to this point, does the council have any questions that they'd like to ask?
I've got a couple. How does the size of this car wash compare to some of the neighboring ones like in Windsor, bigger or smaller?
So that's very similar to the one in Windsor, it's the same owner, the Cannon Car Wash on Crossroads.
Do we know, is there gonna be a mat washer? A little thing that you stuff the mat through? I'm pretty positive. Okay, that is the best. Perfect. And then.
Go ahead. Is that called self-dealing?
Yeah. We had mentioned the standards would prohibit this on Harmony, but it's set back with the two commercial buildings kind of fronting Harmony. That's what makes it comply, is that right?
Correct. The way that staff reviews that condition is that it cannot face or be directly adjacent to Harmony Road. So with it being set back, and then the idea to have the two buildings buffer between that, staff feels that that meets that requirement there. And I think initially, the requirement came from the self-service car washes, making sure that those bays were not the first thing that you're seeing along Harmony. And additionally, having cars either parallel or coming in and out of the car wash, we were hoping not to have directly adjacent to Harmony. So that's where that code requirement came from, and staff's determination is that it is meeting that.
Okay, and then maybe the rendering will answer this question, but kind of what, the face that's visible between the two buildings aesthetically, I'm curious what the plan is for that.
As far as the car wash goes, are the buildings on the south side?
The car wash specifically.
So the car wash is set back far enough, and then we have a bunch of landscape, as well as a screening wall of the long harmony to help screen a lot of that. So for the most part, it'll be hard to see the base of the car wash, if anything, the upper end. And as far as an architectural elements, they're gonna be very consistent with the animal hospital next door.
So it looks like you're gonna heavily hand landscape with trees to buffer it from Harmony.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So the, along with Harmony Corridor, meeting a lot of the architectural and landscape requirements, we also focused on pedestrian and vehicle access, avoid any issues, avoid any conflicts. So throughout the site, there's really good circulation for vehicles, as well as plenty of pathways, trail systems, usable open space for pedestrians to utilize. That will open up to any more questions you have.
Any more questions? Thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
Chad, anything else?
No, nothing else.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Do I have a motion to approve resolution number thirteen, series twenty twenty-three, a resolution approving Canyon Express Car Wash Site Plan?
I move to approve a resolution approving the Cannon Express Car Wash Site Plan.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution number thirteen, series twenty twenty-three, a resolution approving Canyon Express Car Wash Site Plan was approved unanimously. Resolution number fourteen, series twenty twenty-three, a resolution for the Flock Heart Harmony Minor Subdivision. Aaron, I understand that we had engineering submission of thirty-some pages here sometime today, is that correct?
That is correct, Mayor.
So I am going to make the motion that we table this resolution, because I haven't had a chance to read those thirty-three pages.
I concur with that also. I know that the applicant submitted another significant document with a lot of historical information that I would like to learn more about, so I think this makes sense, Mayor. I would second your mission.
I have a question, if I could. You mentioned engineering submission, this is different from what the flock arts submitted this morning, or is this?
It's my understanding.
I believe you're talking about the same document.
There was a submission that came.
Yes, it was.
Thursday, Friday of last week.
There was a, there was a document that was submitted to the town by the applicant late yesterday afternoon that then made its way to you all as counsel this morning. I believe that's the document that Brett and Mayor, you both referring to. There were a lot of historical documents that were within that, but I believe you both are talking about the same.
So I recall it's something that had a lot of historical background. I don't remember much engineering discussion. Unless there's another document I'm not aware of, that's what I'm trying to clarify.
No, I don't believe so. There there was the document, yeah, that was submitted yesterday, that is probably what you both are talking about.
I've got a second to figure it out.
Mayor, I'll just add that I also have not had a chance to read the document that we received at some point this morning.
Okay.
And I believe it was the flock card.
Yes, that is, that is the document.
So whether it's one or two, nobody's read the one, just because we weren't given enough time to read it. So I've got a motion to table, and I've got a second. All those in favor of tabling? Resolution number fourteen, just a sec, I gotta add something here. So I need to revise my motion. My motion is I am moved that we table resolution number fourteen, series twenty twenty-three until the February twenty-eighth council meeting.
And I would second that.
Okay. So do I have, all those in favor of resolution, of tabling? Resolution number fourteen, series twenty thirty-three, a resolution for the Flock Heart Harmony Minor Subdivision to February twenty-eight, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion's tabled till next meeting. Latham Parkway, Kevin?
Thank you, Mayor. So a while back, I believe at the end of last year, you all as council had asked staff to do some research on the Latham Parkway naming and where that came from. Just a quick overview, it's in your packet, but back in two thousand and six and two thousand and eight, the town went through an extensive process to rename a lot of the county roads to historical names that were either in or near Timneth in, that actually was done with the Columbine Club, who produced the history of Timneth book. So during that time, a lot of those county roads were renamed, and County Road One was proposed and changed to Latham Parkway. The history of Latham came from Fort Latham, which was named after Milton Latham. And that Fort Latham was located just east of Greeley out near Kersey back in eighteen sixty-two. So generally, that is the quick history. I can dive into that more if you would like. I probably know way more than I would want to on that situation. But just for some clear, for some other context, there are roughly about eighteen properties that are within the Timneth jurisdiction, or that are adjacent to the Timneth jurisdiction of of Latham Parkway that are on both the Weld and Lerner County sides of the road. These properties don't utilize Latham Parkway for their address. They utilize the county road designation of either County Road One or County Road Thirteen, just because they are a county property. If and when any property did develop into the town and needed access and addressing, that's when it would be addressed off of a Timneth, the Timneth name for that. There are currently roughly twelve intersections that are along the road within our jurisdiction. Each intersection would have to replace roughly two street signs. And then the biggest one would actually be the Latham and Harmony intersection, which is a signalized intersection, which has those street signs on the mast arms of the street light. So with that, if council were to want to rename Latham Parkway, we would have to do all the new signage, which would roughly cost between somewhere around six thousand to eighty-six hundred, give or take, for all of those signs to be replaced. So I'd be happy to answer any questions about the history, where we kind of got to, anything else like that.
So I'm the fly in the ointment here, and I'm the one that requested this. And I am not gonna fall on my spear on it either. But it seems like it's Colorado Boulevard all the way from Denver through every single town through Windsor, and then all of a sudden, we call it Latham, which I think is confusing because you're on the same dang road. This is a good time to fix it. If we wait, the cost will just double or triple for eight thousand bucks to have a consistent naming of the, of the street. To me, makes tons of sense. You know, I'm for it, but, you know, I don't, it's, we're naming a street, so it's not rocket science.
Sorry, Kevin. Have you received any feedback from the eighteen county properties?
We have not reached out to any of those county properties yet. Typically, with a renaming like this, just is what happened back in two thousand and six and two thousand and eight. As I mentioned, they keep their, their county road address, because that's who they get their mail from, would be the county, or basically, they either get their mail from Fort Collins or Windsor. Typically, just because as a county resident, they get their mail through those post offices. So nothing would change from that standpoint, so it doesn't really impact them too much, as it is just a naming convention.
Thank you.
I have a question. What does Google call it right now? And I'm just thinking, for driving purposes, I know it aggravates me when it tells me to turn on a street and it doesn't say that street name. I don't have a strong opinion on this. I think it's silly that we all have the same names for a road that goes sixty miles anyway, but I know that that's how they do it here.
So Google has it as Latham for the portions that are within town.
So it would impact those houses potentially based on if they're giving somebody their address and they put it into Google to get there?
Not necessarily. I believe that it would still, I've, I think I've actually looked at one of those properties to Google, and it still gets to the location that they need, because that address isn't technically off of Latham. So I believe it does not actually impact them as, as you would think.
So it says County Road Thirteen or?
In other areas, it does say County Road Thirteen, County Road One, things like that, yes.
Thank you.
I'll do a little show and tell here for you, Lisa, and I'll. So I Google Colorado Boulevard, and here's the map from Denver, all the way north of Fort Collins. You can see that gap, and it's probably big enough to me to see back there. That's right where Timneth is, right where the gap is. So I think it makes sense to play nice with the rest of the state and name the road Colorado Boulevard.
Kevin, the last time that we talked about this, council did receive an email from a concerned citizen alleging that Governor Latham had some, for lack of a better term, racist writings back in his time. Do we have any indication based on your research, if that's something that's accurate, or we should be concerned about?
That actually is accurate, as doing my research.
Head of the Ku Klux Klan in Colorado.
He was, as governor of California, his political party was a very pro-slavery political party back in eighteen sixty, when he was doing that. So yes, that is a piece that is factual.
You should have started with that.
So I'm gonna make a motion, unless somebody wants to keep talking. But I'm gonna make a motion that we change the name of Latham to Colorado.
So to do that, Mayor, we do have to have a resolution for that. So at this point, this would be directing staff at the next meeting to bring forward
Thank you.
A resolution for change.
So I need a head nod then. So I got one, two, three, four. So all of us say, change the name of Latham to Colorado, if you can give us a resolution for next meeting.
We can do that.
Thank you. Thanks for the research.
You're welcome. I know way too much about it.
It sounds like it. Okay, any other comments? Staff, any more comments? Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Opposed? We are adjourned.